Call to order the January 25th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I will recognize Councilmember Con Johnson, who will lead our ceremonial opening.
Just the pledge. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. There has been one change to the agenda. The developer for 22 REZ 18 Trinity Road Townhouses has asked that this item be removed from tonight's agenda, and it will return at a future council meeting. So is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And we have two special guests from Troop 152, who are working on their communications merit badge. Two scouts, if you would stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here. Our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the online and printed agenda. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person tonight. If you are here in person and would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows that are highlighted. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes each for their comments. And speakers may speak on any town-related topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. When you start speaking, it will be green, and when there are 30 seconds remaining, it will turn yellow. And when your time has expired, it will flash red, and that will be the point I will interrupt you. Again, I'm not trying to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding and respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out. And first, I'll call on our town clerk to read any comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had three written comments and one registered speaker. Alan Madema expresses complete support for 22 REZ 18 Trinity Road Townhomes rezoning project, emphasizing the positive impact it is expected to have on the Cooper Properties community, including his own properties on Deerwood Place and Old Trinity Circle. Mary Collins expresses support for the restoration of Ivy Ellington House while raising concerns about the budget. She also addresses property tax increases, emphasizing the negative impact on citizens, especially those on fixed incomes, and urges efforts to conserve affordability for long-term residents facing rising costs. Morgan Stickney expresses concerns about the excessive traffic speed at southeast Cary Parkway intersection with Coorsdale Drive. She urged Cary to address the issue before a serious accident occurs, emphasizing the need for proactive measures to ensure safety. Our one in-person speaker is Vala Kamuju.
If you are here, I would ask that you come forward at this time. Okay, not here. If there are any other registered speakers?
No other registered.
If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on town-related issues that's not a public hearing, I would invite you forward.
My name is Renee Miller. I am a Cary resident. One of the hottest topics on local social media lately has been the pedestrian and automobile traffic downtown. As expected, the downtown park has quickly become a destination attracting visitors from all over Cary and the surrounding area. Now we are seeing pedestrians in numbers that we haven't in a long time, if ever. If you get on Facebook, or Nextdoor, or other local social media, you'll see pedestrians ranting about careless drivers, and drivers upset about pedestrians who are jaywalking. I've experienced both, been the pedestrian unseen in a crosswalk, and a driver trying to avoid walkers stepping out from between parked cars after dark. I've spent a couple of evenings on Academy Street in the past week, and I have made a few observations. Clearly, some thought has been put into the lighting of the crosswalks at night. There are double the number of lamps at most of the crosswalks on Academy Street, but it's not working. First, the light goes up and out rather than down to the sidewalks. The light is blue or white instead of the golden from the park and the Arts Center, which draws the eye up and away from the street surface. And finally, the lighting creates shadows at the street level that hide pedestrians from drivers, even when they are in the crosswalks. Interestingly, the same problems do not exist at the lower end of the park. Downlighting on Park Street is the same color as the surrounding lighting, which makes it easier to see at the street level. We should experiment with some temporary downlighting on Academy Street at each crosswalk, and see if it helps drivers see better, and invites pedestrians to use the crosswalks. We could also change the color of the light bulbs. The second observation is that it is difficult to find the crosswalks for both drivers and pedestrians in the evening. We have beautiful brick pavers, but the easiest crosswalk to spot is the one that is bordered by reflective paint. Incorporating a more reflective material on the crosswalk borders will also help identify the area for pedestrian use. Perhaps we could lower the speed limit on Academy Street, or between Walnut and Chatham, to something odd, like 23 miles an hour or 19 miles per hour. Speed limits like that get noticed. Providing crossing guards during bigger events is another possibility. Could we work with the Police Department to develop some volunteers to help with that? It would also help identify official pedestrian crossings, and hopefully be more used by foot traffic. A little education also never hurts. Developing some sort of stick-in-the-brain safety education for both drivers and pedestrians would help raise awareness to these issues. I'm reminded of the Star Wars-themed signs on the greenways during COVID. As we settle into the activity downtown, we will undoubtedly uncover longer-term solutions to these challenges.
I'm sorry, her time has expired. I appreciate your comments so far. I'd love to read the rest of them. If you would pass them on to the clerk, she would make sure we get them.
I'd be happy to, Mayor, but there's only one more sentence, so we're done.
Oh. Thank you so much. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, and we still don't have the registered speaker. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to our next item, which is the consent agenda.
Someone wait.
I'm sorry?
He's right here.
You would like to speak at Public Speaks Out?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the Waukeah Town House, right?
That's a public hearing, right? That will come later. Yep. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda, which is item four. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV or other media, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please know that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have the Ivy Ellington House rehabilitation bid award, and we also have the technical revisions to policy statement 143. Would a council member like any of these pulled from consent for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that applied for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is 22 REZ 23 Waukeah Towns rezoning, and Senior Planner Aaron Puckett will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight. It will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation at a later date. Ms. Puckett.
Thank you, and good evening, Council. This is a request to rezone approximately 12 acres located at the western end of Waukeah Road at its intersection with Highcroft Drive. The subject property includes two parcels and portions of two others with the resulting rezoning boundary shown here. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the somewhat oddly-shaped rezoning assemblage, which leaves out large portions of two parcels. While this is somewhat unusual, the reason for this oddly-shaped rezoning is due to the boundary of the existing zoning districts. This is more clear when shown on the zoning map here. As you can see, the portions of the assemblage not included in the request are zoned Resource Recreation, or RR, in the dark green. These areas represent environmentally sensitive stream buffers or flood hazard areas that were rezoned with a previously approved rezoning that I will touch on later in the presentation. You might also notice that there are two small corners of the site which are included in this request, as they are outside of the RR zoned area. While these corners are likely not buildable due to being segmented from the rest of the site, including these areas in the rezoning request allows for a slightly higher gross density, and their inclusion in the request is consistent with the previously approved rezoning, which applied the R8 CU zoning that you see here to those small corners. Cary's stream buffer map helps show how the existing RR zoning roughly follows these environmentally sensitive areas. According to Cary's GIS, small portions of the rezoning assemblage may still be impacted by stream buffers and floodways. If the rezoning is approved, a more detailed field determination of these features is required to be completed at time of development plan review. This is a view of Highcroft Drive, looking south with the site on the right. There are no overhead utility lines along the site frontage. Waukeah Road is designated as a collector's street to the east of the site, and would be a local street west of Highcroft Drive, with two lanes and sidewalk on one side of the road. Highcroft Drive is a future collector avenue with two lanes, sidewalk on the west side of the road, and street-side trail on the east. The portion of Highcroft Drive along the site frontage is existing, as it was constructed with the reserve at Waukeah Neighborhood. There are gaps in Highcroft Drive to the north and south of the site. For the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan, no parks or greenways are proposed within or immediately adjacent to the site. A portion of the Highcroft Drive's street-side trail is already constructed along the eastern side of the road across from this site. The Panther Creek Greenway runs just northwest of this site, which you see in the green on this map. The applicant has let staff know that they are exploring the feasibility of a connection to this greenway, but have not yet committed to it with a zoning condition. The existing zoning for most of the site is residential eight conditional use, R8 CU, with a small area zoned residential 40, or R40. The subject assemblage includes portions of two previous rezoning requests. So the northernmost and westernmost parcels, which are shown here in the blue dash line, were rezoned in April 2015 for detached dwellings as part of a larger area which was built out as the reserve at Waukeah Subdivision. A third parcel, which I'm showing now in the orange, was rezoned shortly thereafter in June 2015 as part of a larger area zoned for the same use and density. A portion of that rezoned area was built out as the Wellfields subdivision. Collectively, 175 detached units were proposed across these two rezoning boundaries. 109 were built with a reserve at Waukeah, which was rezoned with the area shown in this blue dash line, and 27 units were built as the Wellfields subdivision, which is the eastern part of the rezoning shown in the orange dash line. The parcels shown with this green hash symbology include the remaining area, which was not built out with these adjacent subdivisions, and have a remaining allotment of approximately 39 detached dwellings under the existing zoning today. The applicant proposes to rezone these R8 CU areas along with the small R40 parcel to transitional residential conditional use, or TRCU. And the applicant has also offered several zoning conditions, including limiting development of the site to a maximum of 72 townhouses, neighborhood recreation and accessory uses, limiting each townhouse building to a maximum of five units, and for comparison, the LDO limits townhouse buildings to five units unless they are alley-loaded, in which case buildings could have up to eight. Wiring garages to allow for future EV charging, providing a minimum of 10,000 square feet of community gathering space, which is approximately four times the LDO requirement. There will also be at least two gathering areas, and each individually must be at least 3,000 square feet. The applicant has also offered several architectural commitments. Staff note that some of these are more significant in contributing to form transitions or the aesthetics of the development than others, and these include prohibiting vinyl siding at time of initial construction, ensuring pitched gable roofs, and providing some masonry material on front and side facades. There are several more minor architectural commitments that have also been offered, which include a small facade offset between units, carriage-style hardware on garages, and window grids on front elevations. A preliminary analysis against the ImaginCary Community Plan finds that policies in the live, work, shape, and move chapters apply. The proposal for townhouses at this location would help address live policies regarding housing choice, as townhouses currently make up the smallest share of existing housing in a half-mile area at about 12%. The assemblage is also largely surrounded by newer detached residential neighborhoods, so could help introduce housing diversity to this developing area. Similarly, smaller lot housing types can help support a diverse workforce, thus supporting the associated work policy. Regarding the shape chapter, the unique location of the site, which is separated from the adjacent reserve at Waukeah Development by Highcroft Drive and its associated streetscapes, and from Cameron Pond by the RR zoned stream buffer areas that I discussed previously, will naturally achieve some vegetated separation from these lower-density neighborhoods. Commitments to gathering space and certain architectural requirements help address the appearance of the development. And finally, the move chapter stresses the importance of designing transportation infrastructure to address land use context. In this case, vehicular access will be solely via Waukeah Road in the near term until Highcroft Drive is completed. Strategies to increase bicycle and pedestrian connectivity are therefore of increased importance. The applicant is exploring options to make a greenway connection, but has not yet committed to it. The Future Growth Framework designates this site as being within a mixed neighborhood. This designation calls for a variety of housing types, unit sizes, lot sizes, and densities, and townhouses are supported as an appropriate use. A neighborhood meeting was held in December of 2022. 22 citizens attended and had questions and concerns regarding the future extension of Highcroft Drive and the timing of that, concerns about the only-site access being Waukeah Road, and whether, excuse me, and whether traffic calming could be provided, questions about gathering spaces and amenities, questions about a potential greenway connection, questions about whether a traffic study was required, and concerns about the height and appearance of the townhomes. Staff received two emails since the neighborhood meeting. One citizen had follow-up questions about the Highcroft Drive extension and improvements, and another simply wanted information about the council meeting. Staff mailed public hearing notification to property owners within 800 feet of the site, which exceeds the state's and Cary's LDO requirements, and staff also posted public hearing signs on the property. This concludes my presentation. The applicant's representative, Neil Gosh, is here to provide comments, and following the public hearing, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett.
Thank you.
At this time, I would invite the applicant's representative forward.
Good evening, Mayor Weinreich, Mayor Pro Tem Robinson, members of the Town Council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street in Durham. I'm here tonight representing the applicant for this rezoning, which is HH Hunt. I want to start by thanking Ms. Puckett for her presentation, and I'll try not to be duplicative of her presentation or her comments, but there are a few things I did want to point out. I want to take a moment to appreciate HH Hunt for having put in the time and effort to respond to feedback we have heard from neighbors, staff, area stakeholders about this project. Ultimately, this is an infill project with some established single-family communities to the north and east. There also are some planned commercial and multifamily development to our south in the Tyler Road North PDD. With the predominant housing type in the area being single-family, and with commercial and multifamily slated to be developed south of us, a townhome community here will provide a textbook example of a transition in intensity. The townhouse concept also helps achieve the overall vision of the mixed neighborhood designation for this area on the Future Growth Framework map. And when we had our neighborhood meeting in December of 2022, we got a fair amount of feedback, as you saw, from area stakeholders. I think it will be useful to explain the changes that HH Hunt has made to its plans in an effort to address the concerns that we heard. For starters, we originally had planned to rezone the entire acreage, including the areas that are currently zoned RR. Now, we never planned on developing the area zoned RR, but by rezoning it to TR, we would have been able to boost the density on the developable portions of the property. So originally, we proposed around 94 units. Through our engagement efforts, we came to understand that though we were never planning on developing or disturbing the areas currently zoned RR, there was a sense of loss in the community nonetheless if we were to change the zoning of that RR land. We have since revised our application to leave those portions out of the application, so the portions of property currently zoned RR will remain zoned RR. And our original application would have rezoned 19.63 acres, and we cut out more than seven acres from the project, and in turn, we also dropped the max unit count from 94 to 72. Relatedly, we also heard that there was a need for more community gathering space in this area. Originally, we had committed to providing 150% of the required community gathering space, but this concern persisted. We have since revised our application and have increased the amount of community gathering space to 10,000 square feet, which I think you heard was about four times what is required in the LDO. Moreover, we also committed to having at least two distinct community gathering areas in this community, which results in a more equitable distribution of those spaces. These represent some pretty significant changes to the original application, but I will say these changes are proof that the process in Cary can work. We were able to mold the project to address concerns we heard and come to a workable solution. I also want to note that while we have not yet committed to providing a connection to the nearby Greenway Trail, we have been in conversations with the adjacent HOA, I think it's Cameron Pond HOA, to obtain an easement for exactly that purpose for about eight months now. I am happy to report that I believe we have a meeting of the minds and that the HOA is going to grant us an easement. They haven't yet, but we have sent over a draft easement, which, you know, for their review and signature, and we're just simply waiting to hear back from them at this point. And if, I will say, if during the course of this rezoning process we are able to secure that easement, we will commit to providing that greenway connection. We also have the architectural commitments to ensure that the homes will mimic some of the characteristics and features in the surrounding community, and we have committed to providing EV charging outlets inside the garages. This is not a large project, but it is a very thoughtful and sensible infill project. I think when you think about this, this is a good use of this space, a residential project in a residential area and next to a greenway corridor. This is where people ought to live and make community with established neighborhoods. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have, and we look forward to receiving your feedback tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So now is the time for the public hearing, 22 REZ 23 Waukeah Townhomes rezoning. And first, I'll call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had seven individuals submit written comments and I'll summarize them together. They reached out regarding the rezoning, mentioning concerns over traffic and safety, constructions-related issues, environmental considerations, and infrastructure improvements. And the name of those individuals are Suparna, Brandon Scott, Adele Smith, Michael Arbridge, Shuthi, Suraj, Santosh, Komar, so Neil Gali.
Okay, thank you. Any registered speakers?
We had three registered speakers. Timothy Basely is our first registered speaker.
Mr. Basely, if you're here, please come forward.
We ran out of print.
Can you move to your left, please? Thank you.
I didn't have time to print for myself today. First, I wanted to thank the Town Council for the opportunity to speak this evening on the Waukeah Towns rezoning and the broader trends in development in West Cary. My name is Tim Basely, and I live on 1316 Maryfield Drive in the Reserve Waukeah Community. I live there with my wife, Rachel, and our three-and-a-half-year-old son, Brooks, and our 11-month-old Charlie. I'm also a board member on the Homeowners Association there. We've really enjoyed our two and a half years here, and I want to first thank both Town of Cary staff and leaders for the professionalism, engagement, and transparency in how the town has been built over the years and how it runs today. Before I speak to the specific rezoning request in front of us, I want to recognize upfront that we are the beneficiary of new development, and that growth in West Cary presents a great opportunity. We are also at a pivotal point in this section of the town, so how we pace, sequence, and prioritize that growth is equally as important. To borrow a term I believe the mayor has used since before I could buy a drink or drive, we want balanced growth. To me, that means providing potential new citizens with the same opportunities we have had to live in Cary, as well as maintaining an increased quality for living, and increase and maintain the living standards for the current residents. A couple of key facts before we talk about the zoning. We have six HOAs in our four-block radius between 540 Morrisville Parkway 55 and Carpenter Fire Station. There are approximately 770 units there today. In that same radius is about 1,826 proposed units, or approved, on the development map in that area. That's representing approximately triple the housing, if all of that comes to fruition. The closest middle school and high school are two of the five schools in Wake County with enrollment caps across those grades. Also, the second closest elementary school is an enrollment-capped campus. I do want to recognize that Wake County Public Schools is the presiding body of that, but I do think that the Town Council has a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the development decisions also are coordinated with the school impacts going forward. I think the current application focuses heavily on the live policies in our 2040 ImaginCary Plan, which is largely indexed on housing diversity and supply, but possibly at the expense of our engage, serve, move, and shape portions of the policy. After speaking with many community members, we are seeking the following small adjustments to the application to help achieve the 2040 Community Cary Plan and balance the need for growth in West Cary. First is the focus on connectivity. This includes Parks and Rec School Number One to maintain well-connected greenways. I believe the gentleman earlier referenced that that is in progress, so that's great to hear, and also the four move policies on safe and multimodal transportation in the area. So the greenway itself, just to highlight the benefits, would provide safe access and transportation to New Carpenter Fire Station Park, Mills Park and schools, and the future Mills Park Community Center, which I think would all be great benefits to the nearby community. It also starts to better connect disparate mixed-use and higher-density development sites in the area, which is the main value proposition, is walkability. So I think that's something we're seeking. Second, the Highcroft Road extension, I think has been brought up a few times. We'd like to see that as a condition of this development. We'd like to see that as a condition of this development, given the increased traffic that come through this area and also just the increased flow of vehicles on 55. Every time we add new development, 55 gets more and more traffic, and there's very little release to 540 on the other side on Morrisville Parkway. Second focus for our community is on sense of place, focusing again on the Parks and Rec goals of open space systems and also our serve policy to do the same. We're requesting a requirement minimum of 20,000 square feet common area, which is a little less than half an acre in new development space to allow for either a pool or a playground or something else that can be used by children and family of varied ages. Many established communities have communal activity spaces to come together and promote mental health and physical well-being. Essentially, this new phase would be part of our existing community, which represents about 109 homes that H.H. Hunt has built, but unfortunately, we've to date only have a small mailbox island as a community space, but no other communal gathering space. This leaves little usable space for community events, interactions in play for families to come together, and this would help better integrate an existing community with a new community. Lastly, just focusing on community continuity and density, we're requesting a minimum 50-foot buffer to allow for the transition from the single-family homes to the townhome community. Potentially consider eliminating the number of townhomes unless the Highcroft Road extension can be completed in terms of traffic and flow because Wakina is a high pedestrian and high visibility area for kids and other people walking around. And while this is not the direct subject of this meeting, we'd also consider the rezoning for the Carpenter Fire Station PDD as an overall density add to the area, which is very nearby to that as well.
Mr. Basely, I have to interrupt you at this time. Your time has expired.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you for providing your comments so we can fill in the rest of the gaps.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next registered speaker is Bill Stolpe.
Hi there. My name is Bill Stolpe. I'm a resident at the Reserve of Wakina, also the HOA president, and I've been a resident at the Reserve for three years, moving in in 2020. I was one of the first 10 to move in, so I've seen quite a bit of changes in the community over, you know, the time I've been there. I'm speaking or requesting, my understanding is that we could ask for conditions to be made for the rezoning. My request is that we have, the new townhouses have their own HOA set up. The reason I'm asking for that on behalf of our community is that at the time that the HOA was turned over to us, which was the beginning of 2022, we were left in a, I'll say, a bad financial situation at the turnover. And that was because HOA fees were set at about a third of what the operating costs were, and we didn't have enough revenue to build reserves, which is part of our contractual agreement, is part of our declaration. So it's kind of left our community in a tough financial situation, which we are now having to dig ourselves out of. This year, at the start of the year, we reset the HOA fees pretty considerably, and that created a lot of churn in our community. But as the board, it's our obligation to run the Reserve of Wakina like a business, you know, that generates revenue and has expense, just like any other business. So we had to make that move. The, my, my concern is that H.H. Hunt has shown no willingness to work with our community or to work with our board. They are completely disengaged. We don't, we didn't know about the Phase Three that they talked about that was added and the financial implications that would result from that, which increased our operating expenses. And we didn't, we haven't had any conversations about these townhomes, and that is adding 62% more dwellings to the current development that we have today. So we don't know what that's going to do, you know, to having to manage the community expenses and what that's going to do, you know, to do to our budgets and things of that nature. So I would really like to see or consider the best outcome would be their own HOA. If we can't get that, then I would at least ask that we're part of an amended HOA declaration that we have input to or we have decision-making rights over. And that, you know, more, I will underscore the more common space. I think that's going to be critical. We actually have none, and we have, it's a large community, and as you heard, we only have the common mailbox space, so that's not really adequate. And then would also, I'd also propose that one of the conditions is that new residents that move in have to pay some kind of a catch-up fee so that their, you know, the community's been paying into the HOA funds for three years, so the townhomes are going to get the benefit of having, you know, reserves and those expenses. So it feels that that would be, that would be a proper thing to help offset some of the rising costs that we're going to incur. So with that, that's my request, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Suparna Kandila.
Good evening. I wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to talk today. I'm also a resident of the Reserve at Wakina. I used to live in Cary, moved far away, came back from the west coast and loving it back in Cary. One of the reasons why a lot of people move to Cary is because of the standard of living and low densities. A lot of people who we've seen move into the Reserve of Wakina are people who moved from like areas like Boston and New Jersey, and one of the big draws is the lower density, the accessibility to parkways. So we want Cary to be mindful of that when they're, you know, proposing all these higher-density things, is that one of the things people come to Cary for is the lower density. I have two young boys, and they play in our neighborhoods and with a lot of the kids in the, some of the neighborhoods right next to us, including Wellfield and Indian Wells. And traffic and safety is one of my main concerns. A lot of the kids are just walking or biking around. As you see in this map, Wakina remains the main connector road to this new proposed subdivision, and it would require people to come off of 55 onto either Indian Wells Road, passing through the new, passing through the existing Indian Wells community, or passing through some of the new Carpenter Point townhomes, coming down Wakina, passing through our neighborhood, or coming in via Sedgfield, which is another residential neighborhood right next to us. They'll also be driving right past Wellfield. These are areas where kids are biking, kids are running on scooters, and that, it is also the primary access for any of these residential neighborhood people to go to the YMCA, which is at the corner of 55 and Carpenter Fire Station. And we love that we can all go to the YMCA, but it's, it's an issue if there's so much traffic. So we're requesting that at least the extension of Highcroft Drive be factored in, roads be widened, there are sections of Wakina and Indian Wells that don't have sidewalk and proper lighting. Those things need to be put in before new housing comes in. And taking data from the town of Cary's website, there have been 169 vehicle crashes on or around our section of NC 55, including 32 vehicle crashes that happened in 2023 alone. One has already been booked for the month of January 2024. Local channels such as ABC 11 have also reported on the large number of accidents related to scooters. So with all that, you know, we, our neighboring community in Apex mourned the loss of a 10-year-old who passed away because of an incident between a scooter and a, and a vehicle. You know, we don't want it to come to that before, you know, we realize what's going on, so please factor those things in, widen roads, have proper connectors so that traffic can go. Highcroft is a much bigger road. There should be access to Morrisville Parkway and the new community through there rather than through all of our residential neighborhoods. And finally, I'm, like Bill, I moved into the neighborhood in early 2020, and in that time, there have been four new, four or five constructions that have happened and are, there are current, there are at least three that are currently going on. I just want to have one day where I wake up to the sound of birds chirping rather than the noise, constant noise of hammers and nail guns. It would just be pleasant to have that. So we're asking also for you to slow down so that you can give us some respite. Let the new communities, you know, who have been there for the last two, three years, enjoy the community, you know, enjoy the sound of birds. And likewise, I just want to point that I find it a little ironic that the town of Cary is allowing all this rezoning and the removal of native trees on one hand, and then, you know, having a my tree, your tree program, and then handing out, you know, native trees to residents in these communities to then put in their backyard with limited space. Just seems kind of ironic. I just wanted to point that out. We're, we're requesting green spaces connecting to local greenways and trails such as Panther Creek Greenway. It would be great for the kids to be able to connect to trailways and have, we would love to have a park. We do not have any kind of common space in our area. Community spaces such as a water feature, a park with a swing and slide, or pickleball seems to be the thing of the season. It would be great to get something like that, trail for folks to walk through the community and connect to other greenways. But primarily what we're asking is, we're not against anyone else moving to there. We would love for there to be more people, but the infrastructure needs to be there before all this rezoning is allowed, you know, widen the roads, get the traffic, the lights and traffic calming procedures, sidewalks. Let all this come in and give us a little bit of a time to enjoy our communities before, you know, we get even more people pushed in over there and let people enjoy Cary. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other registered speakers?
No other registered speakers.
If you're in the audience and would like to speak at this zoning, rezoning, now's your time, and I'd ask if there's more than this speaker, that you take a seat in rows to my right that we have reserved for speakers.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Bala Kamuju. I live in Wellfield Community, and I moved, I'm one of the first guys to move into the community, and we are surrounded by Indian Wells. In fact, I was a homeowner at Indian Wells, then again moved to Wellfield, and I also bought it in Wakina, came out of Wakina, ended up settling down at Wellfield. So I just want to point out something that, you know, everybody can blame 2040, you know, rezoning, saying that this is what can happen, you know, this is what we, it's going to be built. But I want the council members to be conscious of the fact that we are actually building all these high-density apartments in a community where, when I bought my community, I specifically bought because it's not surrounded by high-density homes. So now we are being stuffed, and we seem like developer is basically dictating the terms, telling what to do and proposing all these things where we feel like we are part of the community we are. Suparna has touched many of the points we talked about. You all have seen how long it took for Morrisville Parkway to be open. There's one section of it was not operatable. It took many years. So I feel like I request every one of you to consider the fact that unless they open the, what do you call, Highcroft Drive, otherwise it will create a lot of strain on Wakina Road because we live close to Wakina, and I see all the kids playing. Sometimes I even, my, my son is ninth grade, and I'm even afraid to send him walking to YMCA because the loans, the roads are very narrow, and the traffic is like, they're like just sprinting like as if they are in, you know, in a different community without consens, conscious of the fact that it's a neighborhood. So the, my request for council members, when you vote for these things, and I'm sure your hands are tied or builder comes up and says, this is what it is in 2040, but I want you to consider the fact that as, to look out for all our constituents, saying that we want growth, but growth at a controlled level. So for example, when you, when you're considering approving this 42, 72 townhomes, I don't know the answer, some of them, are they two-car garages? Are they two-level townhomes? Because two-level versus three-level makes a difference, and a two-car garage versus one-car garage adds an extra bedroom downstairs that could add more people. Coming back to Suparna and other people touched, because the schools are overcrowded here. And if you are adding 72 townhouses, assuming that 80% of have kids, at least two, that means you're talking about 100, 120 kids. And I know Wake County controls, you know, what, what schools come in, but you as our representatives, you are aware of the fact that you can't control, but you have to control these traffic congestion, especially the, unless the Highcroft Drive is opened up, and if the developer takes the responsibility that I'm going to build it and make it open, you should not allow them to build these townhouses because it creates a lot of strain on Wakina Road. We already have coming, coming from Wellfield through Sedgfield, you have approved a, a community, I think it's a assisted living community, and there is not even a traffic light there. So if you have to take a left or right, every day you have to watch for five minutes, and sometimes you almost feel like you're going into the curb, and there's no traffic light over there. And now you're coming back to the, towards YMCA, you have approved townhouses. And then next to it, now you have apartments going. So everywhere, just because 2040 rezoning allows you to do, build whatever you want, then unless you restrict these developers to come up, so for example, did you consider asking them to see if they could do something like Blakely, where there's a 55-plus community? Every day I walk through my community, I see that not a single car comes in and comes out. It's not against people moving in and moving out, it's because of less traffic congestion. And that's what I want you to consider to see if you could ask them to come up with alternative to just building 72 townhouses. And my main focus would be to, to see this Highcroft Drive is being fully constructed, that is operable, so that you can operate that street so that you can go on Wakina, because people from Wakina, they go all the way, then they connect at Indian Wells. It's a very narrow road. It is just a traffic nightmare, and also you have to consider that 700 people bought these expensive homes.
I'm sorry, I've got to interrupt you. Your time has expired.
Okay, no problem, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and then I really appreciate all of you to consider public opinion as opposed to developer inputs.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. There's a lot to unpack here.
That's exactly what I was thinking. There's a lot to unpack.
Got a whole page.
I know.
First, let me talk.
That's so funny.
First, let me thank you for being here and taking time out of your evening to come and speak to us. We do value public hearing, and our decisions are based on public hearing. So thank you for taking time out of your day to be here and share what you're thinking. The process may or may not be confusing to you. One of the speakers seemed like he understood everything 100%, and then the others, not so much. So it is confusing, and I totally get that. I mean, Jennifer and I have each been doing this for over 20 years, so we've kind of been around forever, and we have to remind ourselves that, you know, others don't live this every day like we do. So first of all, let me explain the process, make sure everyone understands. Well, let me explain what we're doing. There is a Imagine Cary Plan, which guides land development, and that was created by Cary citizens, not the Cary Council. The Council approved it in 2017, currently being updated, and we have an update and draft, I think, and we'll be looking to approve this very soon. To get something built, you have to have the zoning match the plan, and that determination includes a staff recommendation, a planning and zoning board recommendation, which is an advisory board of citizens, before the Council makes a decision. And so at the public hearing, the applicant makes the case of why they think this zoning should change and how it matches the land use plan, or in our case, the Imagine Cary Plan, which is a collection of plans. And then it goes to our planning and zoning board, and they're going to make a recommendation to us what they think of that. So that's what this is. And a rezoning is the type of use, when we start getting into details about lighting and this other stuff, that's really not the type of use. That's more development and site plan issues that the staff handles with the developer. Doesn't mean what you're saying is ignored, it's just not, this is not the place for that. So there's a lot of things I want to talk about. One I heard over and over is the development pace, slow it down. Development pace is a term, is determined by the market, not the Council. We have no authority to say, stop, you cannot develop. We have no authority to do that. It's all the market. So that is very difficult to understand and very hard to accept. I also heard comments, require the roads to be in place, require the schools to be in place. Amen, I would love that. We had a thing called adequate public facilities, which required that years ago, and the court said, no, 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 you can't do that. So we can't do that. So Highcroft Road, I'm going to ask questions about that in a minute. Let's see, removal of trees. Developers have the right to remove trees unless they're champion trees, unless they're in a stream buffer or another buffer. Those are the things we can control, and the legislature keeps taking our control away, but we try to keeps taking our control away. But we try to control what we can. And we try to preserve as many trees as we can. Our canopy's at 50%, and we're trying very hard to grow it. I heard a cynical comment that, you know, we don't care. We very much care about our trees. Downtown Cary Park, for an example, we planted 600 trees, preserved 36 legacy trees, and 66,000 shrubs, just in 13 acres. So we really care about our trees, and we want those trees to be part of our community. Another comment I heard, which is really disturbing, is developers dictating terms to Council. That is comical because it's the opposite. Developers come to Cary, they kind of know what to expect, and they never usually make it past staff if they don't know what to expect. 90% of applicants that come to planning never get past them to the Council because they can't produce what we expect. And what we expect is you to match the Cary community plan. Let's see, other high densities. Again, this is about matching the Cary community plan. The staff report talked about the housing in that area, and that's what they're going on. Again, it's, I realize all these things are happening all at once, and it seems like a lot, but we cannot control the pace. We can control the type. Let's see, schools overcrowded, I talked about that. Again, that would be adequate public facilities. I can tell you, we communicate with the school system a lot, and they're very aware of what development is coming and how fast it's coming. Their problem is funding. And they don't have the money or the land to build schools fast enough, in my opinion. Not allow townhomes to rebuild is, I'll get back to that. Having approved traffic lights, we don't have authority, I'm kind of dancing on a shaky ground there. We measure the drivers used by NC DOT to put in traffic lights. And I'm looking at staff, and they're like, yeah, well, sort of. So we can request traffic lights be put in, and we can ask traffic lights be put in, but they've got to meet NC DOT criteria.
We can request that warrant, a warrant study be done.
Yes. So when you, you say that you didn't put in a traffic light, well, yeah, there's a reason for that. But we can continue to look at that, and we always do. Let's see, restrict development and ask for, I think it was 55 and over. I don't think we have authority to do that. I know we don't have authority to do that. We can certainly ask. But usually their business model is determined before they come to planning, before they come to staff. So they're not going to change that business model at this point. They would have to start over. And then not allowed to build townhomes. I want to play out that scenario, and this is my opinion. My colleagues can disagree with me. But the way I see it is, if we turn down this proposal, which we very much can do if we don't like it, because we're looking for the best use of the land, they have to wait a year unless they get an exception. And then in a year's time, in my opinion, I think the demand grows, and they come back with something more dense as a proposal. And that could be turned down. And it just perpetuates. And I think as time goes on, the proposals will be denser and denser. And the reason I say that is, we have had steady job growth the last 10 years, and the job growth is expected to grow by 20% in the next 10 years. And the region is expected to double in population in the next 30 years. So the demand is there, and it's going to continue to be there. And it will drive up prices, it will drive up density, and that's going to be hard to control. Something to keep in mind when you're working with a developer, and that's my last point. I was really disturbed to hear that the developer's not communicating with the residents. That's a no-no in my book. You've got to talk to the residents. If you don't, you, you have a high, hard, a high hurdle to, to go over. Please talk with the residents. It's, it's the best way to have a best outcome is when everybody is talking and everybody's looking for the best solution. And without that, we don't get the best solution. So that's what I'm asking of the developer. Please, yes, I know it's difficult. I have people yell at me all the time, so maybe they're yelling at you too. But that's part of your job. So please, talk with the developers, I mean, talk with the citizens, listen to their concerns, and try to work on their concerns. A lot of those were valid. I love the Highcroft connection. I want to hear more about that. And I would like to ask Erin about that. What is required and what is not required? Is anything required of Highcroft? And who's going to connect all those pieces?
So in terms of what's required of this development, that segment of Highcroft Drive along their frontage is already built. It was constructed with the reserve at Wakina. So there's nothing else further that we can require them to build along Highcroft Drive.
And that goes back to the adequate, I think it was part of adequate public facilities, when we required people to build off-site.
Right, it's similar.
And we don't have that authority anymore. So there's really not a lot we can do to force that connection. They would just have to want to do that connection.
Right. They could offer off-site improvements. We could not require them.
Yep. I know I ranted and raved. And I know Jennifer, you've got a long sheet of questions, comments too. So I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Do you want me to give Sarika first?
Absolutely. It's your district, Sarika. Go for it. Do you have a list of comments and questions as well?
I think I, I see your point. But I also live there. And as a resident, I can feel the pain. I do feel that some of the items that were brought to the table, they're worth considering, like having a common area, having a place where, you know, people can meet. And I think that will help bring a little bit more social aspect to the table. Traffic is definitely increasing. So having an assessment probably might help. We should also take a note of, in my opinion, some of the junctions that were mentioned that are high-risk and add that to our list. I do feel that there are some noteworthy items, and we should really look into it. But I do agree with the mayor that there could be things that, you know, is just probably an optic that we can do something, but we can't because of one reason or the other.
And you're absolutely correct. I totally agree with you. There were a lot of comments that were made that can be done.
Yes.
That are very reasonable.
Yes.
And could really help the proposal.
And I think traffic assessment probably is very critical, considering that small area is getting multiple projects that either they're in progress or they're actually under review, and they will be approved very soon. Having an assessment will help and also kind of see where the density is right now. And I could be totally wrong, but I read in one of the emails where it could be 2,610 units that we are adding to the ecosystem. And I could be wrong on the number, but you know, it's somewhere in that range. I think we should complete our own assessment so that we can also present some facts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a very good idea. All right. I was going to also use the expression, there's a lot to unpack here, because there really is. I'll follow up on a couple of your comments to start with. First of all, the state protects the right of property owners to develop their property. So to the point that the speaker made about the irony, which I totally understand, the perspective of feeling like, isn't this ironic? You're letting them take down trees, but then you're also going through an aggressive tree planting program. As long as the developer complies with our plan, the state says he or she's entitled to develop his or her land. So that is something that we work under. There's a lot of requirements that we work under that are given to us by the state. I am very sensitive to the appropriate placement of density. This is something that I'm very concerned about because what we see in communities that are like Cary, that are 85 or 90% built out, is that you end up with these small pieces of land, and people go back and start trying to kind of wedge in greater density. And I recall this from when I moved away from the DC suburbs. I felt like that was happening at that time. We were seeing these small tracts of land getting development that is just more dense. And at times it works, and at times it's incongruent with the community. So when I first started looking at this with the map, and I'm seeing all the yards, I'm like, this is not really a transition because it's all single-family around it. But then I realized we have the PDD major to the south. So I think what would help me going forward is if there are any conceptual plans, or if they've gone through site, I don't know where they are with that project. If they, if they've gone through site, if we could do an overlay of their site plan, so we can see how this ties together, that would help me understand whether I really believe that this is a transition, or if it is just kind of a overdevelopment of a little piece of land. Now, with that being said, it's very difficult when you, when you go through the initial rezoning of a project, and then you see it come back to you a second time. Because the first time, we approved the entire community based on the idea that this was going to be a certain way. It was going to be, this whole thing was this same density. So we approve it. And then, and, and I believe, I'm not sure why, there is not a community gathering space unless the gathering space is so tiny, it's mistaken as just the mailbox units. Like, is it that tiny? Is it 2,500?
It is a fairly small gathering space. I believe it meets the letter of the ordinance, but it is essentially a small, I think mail kiosk, and maybe a gazebo or a bench or something.
Okay.
Jennifer, it is very, very small.
Yeah. And this, this is a problem we have that our citizens have to deal with. That standard is way too small. It should be increased substantially. Because 2,500 square feet is not very large. I think it's maybe even less than this space here. I can't remember what you guys told me the square footage is.
I don't either. I think, I think you're in the ballpark, though.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's just so small. I think we, I think we need to look at that as a council. But it's hard for us to see this come through a second pass and say, well, we gave you this density, thinking this was the community, and then you come back and ask for this more dense. So that makes me feel a little bit uneasy. I would say, and I'm going to apologize for rambling, because I wrote notes, and I just have to go down in order.
I ramble, so.
Okay. As far as the developer not working with the HOA, I think actually, my guess, I'm not in the business of HOAs, but I would guess it actually would, in the long term, help you to have more homes in your HOA to help you carry the budget. But I would say that you may be able to go into a private agreement, and that might be something you want to negotiate with them. Sometimes neighboring citizens will say, well, these are the things that will make this acceptable to us. And if you guys can do these items and go into a private agreement about how you're going to help beef up our HOA budget, then we'll sign off and say, we're good with this rezoning. So that's something to contemplate going forward. I already mentioned the open space, but I do think that the amount that has been offered is minimal. And if I was in a place to ask for something, like if I was a citizen, and I was going to be saying, what, what would make it acceptable to me? I would request that that open space that's dedicated is adjacent to the RR space. Because it will appear to be much more magnified in size if you have, let's say, a playground adjacent to this beautiful wooded stream area that the kids can kind of run around in. So that would be something I would be looking at. The, Lori used to live in my neighborhood, and so she'll remember this well. Morrisville Parkway, for at least 15 years, but maybe more.
Long.
Was a disconnected segment. It was, you had Preston Village, and then you had the townhome community that was part of Preston Village. And you had a little bit of Morrisville Parkway that was not connected on either side. And it was totally fine for all those years, kids traversing back and forth. But when Morrisville Parkway opened up, we suddenly had a major safety issue because there was no safe crossing. So the other thing that I would be thinking about for this little segment of Highcroft Drive would be some type of pedestrian crossing that is light, like a yield sign with light, something marked. I mean, I would be looking at something there so that we make sure that when Highcroft Drive does open up, that we already have the, the equipment in place so that kids can cross safely for that. Let's see here. The Highcroft Drive connection, yes, we used to be able to, to demand that you kind of connect up, but we don't anymore. And it would be very difficult for this developer to go to private landowners and convince them to put the road through and so forth. What could be an option is if citizens felt very strongly about this, is that the citizens could ask the town, write letters and so forth, but not a lot of letters, just one nice organized letter, asking us to make the Highcroft Drive connections as part of a future bond, so that we, the town could go and finish off this road and give you all the relief that you need from having to do the circuitous route out to 55. And I think that might be probably what I would do if I were in your shoes. School crowding. The reason why Blakely is a 55 and up community is because we went through this exact same thing before. We go through the, it's ebbs and flows, right? Schools are capped, parents can't have their kids in the schools closest to their homes. The Council kind of recoils and goes, oh, my gosh, we really do have a hand and responsibility here. So there was a period, and I don't know what the years are anymore, but there were, there was a period there where we were kind of like, ah, we don't feel good about approving any more density here because our schools really can't handle it. And that is why the applicant from Blakely came back and said, we know, we'll make it a 55 and up community. And then you don't have to worry about the schools. And they were like, okay, go ahead and build. So I say that because even though the applicant is in the process, if that was a major concern, I don't know why it can't be added in at this time, why they couldn't go for a 55 and up community. We know that the senior population is our fastest-growing demographic in Cary, at least historically it has been. And so there's probably always demand for senior housing. So that could help address some of the concerns about that, and may help allay the concerns about going to greater density if we're moving from a single-family product to townhomes. Maybe it might feel better if it was senior housing. I don't know. The last thing is, is for the traffic signal, I apologize, I didn't get the, the intersection where the traffic is particularly bad and a signal's needed. But you can also request of our engineering staff that they request a warrant study to be performed for that intersection from the state. And we can look at it and see if it is at a point where it needs a signal. So I think that is everything on my list.
Okay, good.
I have a couple.
How big is your list?
Well, I think she covered most.
There's a lot to unpack.
She covered, she covered a lot of them. There's a couple of things that I recognize based on actually remembering 14 RA Z08, because it was just 10 years ago. So there are a couple of things that come to mind. The first one is, going back and looking through my notes, the RR area was actually included as part of the open space. So now that this is kind of being divvied up into another rezoning, you know, the reserve was supposed to have access to that space, right? And by splitting this up in this way, it basically takes an amenity or a future amenity that should have been for these residents. And I think that that's an important consideration. And I think that the residents are absolutely right on target when they say, hey, we didn't, we didn't, we don't have anything. Because I was, I couldn't believe that you would allow this to go through with no community space. Okay. So I had to go back and look through the notes. But that, that's why there's at least that constraint right now. And I would love to see that. I also have to say that going back and rezoning something that we spent so much time and effort and thoughtfulness and citizen engagement to do what I was hoping the right way, which was single-family houses, still seems good for me. I, I still would rather this be single-family houses. And to the southwest is the Legacy at Cary, which is 390 multifamily. So if there were to be a transition, I wouldn't necessarily want the single-family right next to the multifamily. It would be nice to have a transition. You know, maybe the, and I'm just thinking out loud, but maybe the northern part is single-family homes, and the southern part is townhomes that abuts the multifamily. So then you get that transition, you don't have the, the single-family houses right abutting the, you know, the multifamily in that PDD major. So that's concerning to me as well. Looking through my other notes as well, I absolutely am thrilled that the applicant is working on the Greenway connection. I will just say, not having the Greenway connection would be a, a big stop sign for me, because it's right there, right? Panther Creek, I mean, let us help you get that done. Because not having that forces all the kids, you know, back on the roads and winding their ways all around. And I absolutely wrote down, we should look at what it's going to take to punch through Trinity Road. It looks like, looking at the maps, that there's a lot. It looks like, looking at the maps, that there's a lot, sorry, Highcroft, what did I say?
He said Trinity.
Trinity, sorry, Trinity on the brain. Sorry, Trinity on the brain. Punching Highcroft through, looks like there's a lot of potential watershed, and some other areas that could be somewhat difficult. I don't know who owns that property, but it's already on the comprehensive transportation plan. It's going to go through, like Mooresville, I really, it's like, I can see, I can see it from my house, I can see Russia, sorry, from my house. Sorry. I can see Highcroft from my house. It just makes perfect sense to do it, especially when we have other developments that are coming on board, that are also going to be focusing on Highcroft. Those are the things that you didn't mention, because I don't want to deviate from the other ones. But yeah, I think there's, this is a long process, and I don't want, we've sat in your seats before, all of us here, whether we were at the Planning and Zoning Board, or whether we were residents coming to talk to council. It can seem somewhat, you know, this is happening tomorrow. It's not. This is a very long process. Your participation is very important, and we want to hear from you. And all these ideas that you're throwing up there, keep talking, because I swear, it will get better every step of the way. So think about all these ideas as you're making your way.
Well said.
Most of my queries were, and feedback matched a lot of what's been said, but what I have is questions for clarity, and as usual, if I'm wondering, probably others are as well. So I want to revisit this Highcroft can't complete it, can't connect it thing. Is it as simple as there's private property in the way?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I really understand.
And the cost of building a road.
And the cost of building the road. If we were, let's just, you know, we own the property, they say the town of Cary owns the property. Then we could build the road, or the developer would build the road? What would the process be?
I hate to use the C-word. We can condemn it and build it, but we don't usually do.
We don't use that word at this table very often.
Right. And that's going really far. Got that. I just wanted to make sure I understood why, if this is a significant problem, and it sounds like to all the folks that live anywhere near here, I'm sure the people are like, just build the road.
And it could be a big benefit if you're a landowner, and you have a road going through your property. It could be a big benefit to have the town come through and build it, because that's not cost for you.
That was my next question. Has somebody asked the property owner, please, may we have some land?
Please, sir.
And do water and sewer usually follow the roads as they are punched through like that?
Water, like sewer's going to follow the streams.
Okay.
I mean, until Highcroft was pushed up there, it was landlocked. You couldn't necessarily get to it, right? So, I mean, it now is a property that's open, but it would have to, we'd have to make some moves, or the developer would have to make some moves.
That's why I was wondering if, you know.
But we can't require it.
Can't make them. Got it. The other question I have, I'd like some clarification. A gentleman made a good point about the height being, you know, pretty, there's a big difference between two and three stories, right? Is there in this, any restriction on what the height can be outside of what the regular?
It would just be limited per the LDO, which would be 35 feet in the TR district.
Okay. Thank you. And this, you know, and trying to gain an easement so that the Greenway could be connected, it sounded like, the gentleman that was speaking.
Neil Gosh.
Thank you, Neil, thank you. It sounded as though that was a likely, you know, potential going to happen thing. Would the applicant consider adding that as a condition in the?
I think he said he would if the easement was approved.
Well, he said that he thought they were near there. I'm asking specifically if they'll add it as a condition, if they can come to an agreement with the HOA.
They could, and that is staff's understanding, is that's what they are trying to work toward.
Thank you. I just wanted clarity on that.
Chris, say that again, what was your?
I wanted to know that, I wanted specifically to know that if the HOA, I believe it was at Cameron Pond, their HOA, if they did allow an easement for the developer to connect the Greenway, if they would add that, if they come to that agreement, if they'll add that as a condition to the rezoning application.
Yes.
That was easy. And the other thing I want to make sure I understand, because I truly don't, is this a distinct homeowners' association for this? I heard multiple times talking about it as a phase of an existing?
Is that something we're allowed to consider?
What I'm asking, is this, when everybody keeps talking about the HOA, I'm not sure I understand what that has to do with the rezoning.
It doesn't have anything to do with us, right, Lisa?
Right, yeah. We don't know, we don't control how they set those up and what those look like.
Okay, so that's something for them to worry about. Okay, thank you. And that's, everybody else covered all the other questions.
I see Michelle with a long list to be here.
I'm writing the things down, so when this goes to the Planning and Res zoning Board, I have all the notes ready to help make an informed decision, to make sure all the questions were answered.
Questions from this, or thoughts or comments?
I think I do have one. I think I see that they were, the proposal is for a minimum 10,000 square foot community gathering space, and I saw at least one place, they were asking for at least double that. Did others catch that, or is it, I mean, I guess people could be asking for different things. The residents were asking. The residents, yes. 20,000, that's right.
And I think the ask is whether, and I think it would depend on what kind of community this is going to be. If it is 55 plus, you won't want swings. But then a pickleball will be more appropriate, right? So I think it might depend on what kind of community it's going to be.
I don't think we can get in that detail.
Yeah. No. I was kind of curious to know whether this is part of the reserve neighborhood or not. Like, that is kind of interesting. Like, where do they go to get their mail? Is their mail going to be picked up at the same mailboxes, the 2,500 square feet mailbox?
We would have to determine that at time of development plan. They would either need to provide their own mail CBU here, or we have had situations in the past where a future phase has added to the existing. There might not be the ability to fit more there. And again, we've got a future collector sort of segmenting this off, so I think it's most likely that they would have their own CBU for this portion, if it were approved.
But you think this is, like, this is considered a latter phase of what is already built, is probably in the same HOA community?
We can't really consider that. That would be a private matter.
Other comments?
Can I ask one more question to get clarity on the gathering space? I think I heard it described as distributed in four different areas?
Two different areas, a minimum of two is what they've committed to. So it could be more, they have to have at least two separate areas.
So functionally, this could become four 2,500 square foot gathering areas?
It could, yes.
Could they include the RR area in their open space designation, or, I mean, or is that part of the reserve at?
Because they did take that zoning district out of their request, this would sort of be separate in and of itself. So that open space, I guess technically, is still part of the reserve.
So is that maintained by the HOA?
I would have to double-check that. It is in separate ownership. These four parcels are owned primarily by the developer, HH Hunt. So the portions of those RR areas are within these four parcels. So even though they aren't part of the rezoning, they are under the same ownership as this assemblage.
So I'm confused. They own it, but they don't, they're not going to touch it.
Right. They cannot touch the RR area. It's not part of this rezoning. Most of it is in floodplain anyway. My point was just that the HOA, to my knowledge, does not own these, any of that RR area. That RR area is part of the parcels that are owned by the applicants in this case.
Okay, so it is possible to, I'm saying, what Jennifer suggested, which is back up the community space to the RR area, and make it likely at least seem, even though it might be only 2,000, you know, square feet, I'm just making that up, it might actually be 10,000, should you actually do the work to figure out how big that is. And could they do that? Could they provide that information as a condition?
We could probably figure out a way to write that, give some locational information around the gathering space, if the applicant wanted to commit to something of that level of detail.
And that area can be accessed by reserve at Vekina as well?
They would likely need to specify that somehow through the condition, but we could work with legal through those.
Accessibility is important.
So, help me understand, so it's a, they're saying that they will have at least, that minimum of 10,000 square feet dispersed at least between two areas?
Yes.
But there's no max? They could take that 10,000 square feet and put it between 10 different community gathering spaces?
Yes, except that they also have this additional condition, and I apologize, it's not specified on this slide, but under that 10,000 square foot condition, there's also one that they have to have at least two spaces, and they can't be less than 3,000 square feet.
Each one has to be at least 3,000.
Yeah, so they could have 10 spaces, but then that would be huge.
Okay, okay. So technically, they could have three spaces.
Yeah.
They could have three community spaces, okay.
They could have more than the minimum they're committing to, certainly.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Lots of opportunity.
There's a lot of opportunity for improvement here.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Got it?
No, I'm just saying, I think it's great.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that.
I hope you're not confused out there. So I'm not going to repeat anything, because it's been well said, it's been well said. I'll just share some observations, and one is, I know North Carolina is now going to allow betting for sports, and it starts with the March Madness, and it's good that we're not betting on rezonings, because it sounds like this would be a real fun one to place a bet on. So that's just an observation. But, you know, what I see is, this is an area that has had its share of challenges in the past, Cameron Pond and all the other things. And, you know, if you're a product of growing up in the 50s, you remember a singer by the name of Peggy Lee, and her famous song was, "Is That All There Is?" And my reaction from listening tonight is just that this effort for a rezoning just feels like we're going to the letter of the law, rather than the spirit of the law. There's a lot of complexities here, and I just, I don't get a warm and fuzzy feeling that a lot of thought's been put into all of these other things that have been explained tonight. You know, that, again, I'm not going to beat those to death. But the one good thing for citizens to know is with a rezoning, and of course, the attorney will correct me, because a lot of times I'm wrong, but a lot of times with rezonings, we have control of that. We can't blame it on the state legislators, we can't blame it on DOT, we can't blame it on anything. When a rezoning comes through, it basically, by definition, is something different than our master plan, or our plans. It is a rezoning. And so what I think you're hearing, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think I'm hearing that, is that we have a higher standard to that. If we're going to do something different than what was planned, then we really need to be thinking about, are we taking care of the community out there? Are we doing the things necessary that make this something special for us to consider? Now, all I can give you is my opinion right now, and it just feels right now, at this moment in time, that what was discussed as conditions to move this forward are just underwhelming. I don't get the sense from the feedback that we got during the presentations, that there's been a lot of dialogue with the citizens. They have, so I'll stand corrected. But all I'm saying is, when this comes back, I'm going to be looking at how all of these questions were addressed. And I'm not expecting them all to be perfect, or, you know, that they all get solved to everybody's satisfaction. But it just seems to me, when I look at this displaced zoning with all the different parcels, and I look at where the possible caveats are with open space, where you might have a couple grand, 2,000 acres here, 2,000, or 200 acres, whatever it is, the small square feet, excuse me, my apologies. Let's go back to, you want to put in more density, how are you going to make that a great quality product that will live consistently with those people out there? I don't see it yet. And there's not a lot of time between now and planning and zoning and coming back, but I just sure hope that you're listening well, as the applicant, and you're listening to these things, and you start thinking long and hard about, how can you be a good partner in this, that will help continue to grow Cary in the high standards that we expect, and that a lot of these things are addressed? So I'm not going to give my opinion on each one, case by case, but you've heard them, and the fact that all of us have spoken up tonight, and all of us have had concerns, and this is now, what, the second time around? Come on, folks. Get the act together, and really start thinking long and hard about what you want to present to us that is a good complement to what we already have out there. So that's, those are just my thoughts, and I'll leave it at that.
Please stop, please stop. This is a business now. Any other comments? Okay, so the process is that this goes to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. That's usually a month or two?
Probably a couple, at least.
Couple of months? And then it's a month or two after that, when we will see it. Plenty of time to work with the applicant, and again, I would ask the applicant, please work with the residents, and plenty of time to get your questions answered, to get your thoughts to us. Erin Puckett is your liaison to the town staff. She will have the latest and greatest information. Of course, you can email us at any time, and we'll do our best to answer your questions, but she would have the latest and greatest information. This isn't your last opportunity to speak to us in public. If you would like, you could speak at any council meeting. Remember, we had a public speaks out portion of the meeting, and it's about anything that's town business that is not a public hearing. So you're welcome back at any time. And again, I'll thank you for being here tonight and expressing your thoughts and opinions, and I'm hoping that everyone will work together and see if we can come up with something that everyone accepts. So thank you. And thank you, Ms. Puckett. And we'll move to our next item, which is a public hearing on 22 RAZ04, Belcanto at Green Level Destination Center PDP, and Assistant Development Director Rob Wilson will introduce the item. And once again, town council will not take action on this rezoning, and it will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Belcanto is a proposal to rezone two properties totaling approximately 35 acres on Green Level West Road. As you know, the Imagine Cary Community Plan is Cary's vision for how Cary will grow and develop. The plan includes a future growth framework map that identifies the different types of development that are appropriate for Cary. This framework is supplemented by five different special planning areas that were identified as needing additional guidance as their key opportunity areas for either redevelopment or new development. This rezoning proposal is located in one of these special planning areas, the Green Level Special Planning Area. The Green Level Special Planning Area is broken down into five sub-areas. Denser development is envisioned in the darker areas closest to NC 540, with density decreasing as you move westward towards Jordan Lake. Belcanto is located in the Green Level Destination Center sub-area. Per the Imagine Cary Community Plan, Destination Centers are Cary's premier mixed-use centers that include an integrated mix of commercial, office, and residential uses, arranged in a walkable pattern with an active pedestrian realm where buildings front on streets. Destination Centers are also intended to contain the greatest development intensities found in Cary. The Belcanto site is located on the north side of Green Level West Road between NC 540 and Beaver Dam Road. Duke Health is located on a 70-acre track immediately east of Belcanto. Duke Health is developing their site under their rezoning that was approved in September of 2019. Their first building opened in 2022, and earlier this month, they met with staff for a pre-application meeting to discuss their plans for a second building. Veritas, which is located directly south of Belcanto, received approval of a rezoning last November. At this time, we do not know their anticipated timeline for development. The Belcanto site is currently located outside of Cary's corporate limits in our ETJ. The site's currently zoned residential 40 and watershed protection overlay district. The site's currently zoned Residential 40 and Watershed Protection Overlay District. An annexation petition has been submitted. This evening's public hearing is for the rezoning proposal only, though, and council will see the annexation at a later date. The applicant is proposing to rezone the 35.3-acre site to Mixed Use District and Mixed Use Overlay District. The site would continue to be zoned Watershed Protection Overlay District. The property's northern and western boundary runs along the Bachelor Branch Creek Corridor. Cary's GIS maps indicate potential streams and jurisdictional features on the site. Field determinations of such features is required at the time of development plan review. The Bachelor Branch Greenway is planned to bisect the northern part of the site, and the portion of the greenway, greenway that runs through the site would be constructed as part of the, as part of the rezoning, the applicant's proposing to provide a connection to the greenway. Ultimately, the Bachelor Branch Greenway will connect to the White Oak Greenway to the south and Thomas Brooks Park to the north. Green Level West Road is currently a two-lane road with a varying right-of-way. The first phase of the Duke Health site has widened the portion of the corridor closest to NC 540, and has installed sidewalks on the north side of the road. Per Cary's planned roadway widths map, Green Level West Road will ultimately be a four-lane thoroughfare with a landscape median. There are currently no fixed route transit facilities in the Green Level Destination Center. The closest fixed route service is currently 1 and 1/4 miles away at the intersection of NC 55 and High House Road. While there are no immediate plans for fixed route transit in the vicinity of the subject property, the applicant has included a condition to provide accommodations for transit stops for future service locations. There are no presently, there are presently no overhead utility lines along the subject site's frontage on Green Level West Road. Belcanto has a preliminary development plan that identifies where land uses are allowed, how access and circulation will occur, and many other zoning conditions. In terms of overall development program, Belcanto is proposing up to a maximum of 700 multifamily dwelling units, 100,000 square feet of office and institutional space, and 20,000 square feet of commercial space. Given that the Belcanto site extends over 2,000 feet north of Green Level West Road, I'm gonna break the site into northern and southern portions. There are four pods that make up the southern portion of Belcanto along Green Level West Road. All four of these pods include the ability to have residential and non-residential uses, although only Pod 1 actually includes a commitment to have non-residential uses, which is why it's designated in purple. In Pod 1, there is a commitment to include a minimum of 10,000 square feet of vertically-integrated non-residential uses. Pods 2 through 4 could be residential, non-residential, or a mix. As far as building height, Pods 1 and 2 would be a minimum of four stories and a maximum of eight stories. Pod 3 may also go up to eight stories, but the minimum commitment is two, and Pod 4 is a minimum of one and a maximum of three. There are two pods that make up the northern part of the Belcanto site. Pod 5 is limited to residential uses with a minimum of three stories and a maximum of five. Pod 6 is proposed to be open space with a community gathering space. A conceptual greenway connection and the envisioned location of the Bachelor Branch Greenway are also shown with blue dots. Belcanto is proposing that a minimum of 50% of the parking spaces in Development Pods 1 and 2 would be structured. This commitment is illustrated by the two gray squares on Pods 1 and 2. There are no commitments regarding structured parking in the other development pods, and a surface lot is indicated on Lot 5. The proposal does include commitments that structured parking shall not front on Green Level West Road, and that there shall be no surface parking between buildings and Green Level West Road. The proposal is also requesting the ability to do angled parking on the private accessways, shown here with the gray dots, that provide internal circulation and parking for Pods 1, 2, and 3. Speaking of access, Belcanto has two streets that serve as the backbone of the site. Street A, shown here in blue, is anticipated to be the first signalized full-movement intersection west of NC 540, and provides eastern access for Belcanto. Street D, shown here in magenta, is anticipated to be the second full-movement intersection west of NC 540. Given the site's location in the Green Level Destination Center and the fact it's adjacent to two other recent rezonings, how streets connect is very important. Accordingly, I'm gonna add the northern part of the 2019 Duke Health PDP to the east, and I'm gonna add the 2023 Veritas PDP to the south. When these three PDPs are laid next to each other, it becomes clear that Street A serves as joint ingress and egress for Duke Health and the proposed Belcanto development, while also aligning with Street A on the approved Veritas PDP to the south. Meanwhile, Street D connects to the east with Street D on Duke Health's PDP, and also curves to the south to connect with Street D on the Veritas's PDP. So, in summary, Belcanto proposes to provide the envisioned connectivity with its neighbors, thereby supporting the access and circulation needs of the overall Destination Center. The proposal includes a commitment to provide a minimum of 35,000 square feet of community gathering areas, exceeding the 5,000 square foot minimum requirement in the LDO. In order to guarantee that these areas will be accessible to the entire site, the proposal includes a commitment to provide a minimum of three different community gathering areas that are spread across the site, as shown here by the green asterisks with red circles around them. The PDP also includes an additional sheet with images representative of the features that will be provided in each gathering space, with a commitment that the provided features will be substantially similar to those shown in these images. The character of these areas ranges from urban in Pod 1 to more suburban in Pods 3 and 6. The review and determination of substantially similar features would be made at the time of development plan review. Other commitments in the PDP include separated bike lanes on Streets A and D, a condition to provide art at the proposed greenway access point, and a maximum height of six feet for any retaining walls between the development and Green Level West Road, and a commitment that any such walls would have a decorative appearance substantially similar to these photos provided here from the PDP. Other commitments in the PDP include a commitment to incorporate green infrastructure techniques such as bio-retention areas, permeable pavement, water harvesting, or soil cells into the site's stormwater management program, a minimum of 24 EV charging stations with criteria to distribute them across the site, utilizing LED lighting for all on-site parking areas, and providing recycling stations for Pods 1 and 2. There are no zoning commitments proposed regarding architecture or building materials, so the project would be subject to our standard land development ordinance and community appearance manual requirements. In terms of materials, this means that true mixed-use buildings with non-residential uses, which currently is only a commitment for Pod 1, would be required to be at least 75% brick, stone, or masonry, while multifamily residential buildings would only be required to be 35% brick, stone, or masonry. In addition, in Destination Centers, there's also the flexibility to use metal panels and/or fiber cement panels for up to 40% of these material requirements. The other eight community appearance manual architectural elements would also still apply to the development. There are a total of eight alternative standards being requested by the Belcanto development, and I'll review each of these requests. The first would allow grading and replanting of the site's Green Level West Road streetscape. The second would decrease the required streetscape width for Pod 2 along Green Level West Road from 50 to 30 feet if only residential uses are developed in the pod. And the third would allow internal streetscapes for Streets A and D to be reduced from 30 to 15 feet. All three of these requested alternative standards are consistent with alternative standards that were approved for the adjacent Duke Health and Veritas developments. The fourth modification would allow one champion tree to be removed due to its location in the path of Street D. The fifth standard would make it clear that buildings can front on private accessways rather than a traditional public street. The travel accessways are intended to provide internal access and circulation for Pods 1, 2, and 3, much like a drive aisle in a parking lot. The sixth alternative standard would allow angled parking along the internal accessways, as long as it's provided in accordance with Cary's standard specifications. The seventh standard would allow vehicular gates to be utilized in parking decks to restrict access and protect parking for residents. Finally, the eighth alternative standard would allow decorative retaining walls to be up to 10 feet tall in stormwater devices if not visible from a public street. In staff's preliminary analysis of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, we found policies in the live, work, shop, engage, shape, and move chapters apply. Since the site's in a special planning area, though, I'm gonna focus on the portion of the shape chapter that includes detailed recommendations for the Green Level Special Planning Area. Specifically, the site's located in the Destination Center sub-area, which includes several detailed goals for development. These goals include achieving a vertical and horizontal mix of uses with a focus on employment-oriented uses. Four-to-seven-story buildings and structured parking are also encouraged, with the vision of creating a highly walkable and active public realm. The key issue that appears to emerge from these Destination Center goals is whether this development, which is proposing to build up to 700 multifamily units, but only committing to a minimum of 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses in a single pod, is consistent with the community plan goal of an employment-oriented Destination Center. While the case could be made that if the anticipated collective development between Duke Health, Veritas, and Belcanto were to occur, Belcanto would serve to primarily, would serve a primarily residential function in support of the greater whole. There are no conditions linking this project to the timing or ultimate program of these adjacent developments. Notice of this public hearing was mailed to property owners within 800 feet of the subject site. This exceeds the state's and Cary's LDO requirements. A virtual neighborhood meeting was held on this proposal on April 6 of 2022. Twenty citizens attended. Questions and comments were shared regarding the amount of density proposed, traffic impacts, how access is going to be provided to the site, school impacts, and the proximity of development to the adjacent subdivisions to the northwest. Attendees generally expressed interest and support in the greenway and proposed open spaces. We have not received any calls or emails since the neighborhood meeting. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Jason Barron, who will give a presentation for the applicant. Following the public hearing, staff will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group. I apologize if I sound hoarse, I think like the rest of the entire population right now. I'm dealing with some sort of nonsense that's going around, but here nonetheless. Excited to be here on behalf of Belcanto Asset Growth Fund, who is the owner of this site and the proposed developer of the site. Joining me tonight are Sandy Avery, Dan Herman, and Daniel Magaziner with Sandy, with Belcanto. Also here is Jesse Hardesty with the McAdams Company, who's provided land planning and engineering associated with this proposed development. I know you always, I think I get made fun of sometimes, because I say that I'm excited to be here. I'm really excited to be here on this one, though. This time, I mean it, and the reason why is this feels like kind of Act III of a, of a three-act play in which we have been creating not just the vision for the build-out of the western portion of the Green Level West Destination Center, but creating the entitlement, creating the predictability to ensure that the policies that are contained in the special planning area that Rob talked about, that those are policies that, that won't live on a desk somewhere, they won't gather dust somewhere, they will be embodied in the entitlements. And as you heard from Mr. Wilson, in 2019, Duke was zoned, Veritas was zoned. At the end of last year, I had the pleasure of working on that project, and excited to be here as part of the public hearing portion of this case and working our way through the rezoning process here. Before I go on, I wanna share, I've got a couple of handouts, which is a little bit unusual for me, so I'm gonna do my best to work off of handouts. Hand these around. As you, as most of you recall, Councilwoman Craig and Von Saul, you weren't on the council at the time, but in December of 2022, there was a work session that occurred relative to these three development projects. And the reason why it happened was because Duke Health had zoned in 2019, and were considering some modifications and additions to that approved 2019. The Halle Companies had come to me saying, hey, we're interested in pursuing the Veritas development, and Belcanto had come to me and said, hey, we're interested in participating, we're gonna buy some property over in, in the Green Level West Destination Center. And I realized pretty quickly, and the town realized pretty quickly, your staff realized pretty quickly, that about 95% of the developable area in the Destination Center west of 540 was essentially in the hands of three distinct property owners. And the property owners got together, and the property owners got together for the purpose of making sure that each of their individual priorities, which are distinct but related, each of their individual priorities could be achieved on their own behalf, but also understanding the backdrop of the Cary Community Plan and the policies that are included in the special planning area, which speak to the entire district. As you all are aware, the policies, actually, the policies mentioned, you couldn't achieve all of those things on one specific property. They are designed for, they are policies that speak to the entirety of the district. So, in 2022, I worked in close coordination with your staff, ultimately culminating with a work session, really to kind of bring the council up to speed on the moving parts, recognizing that it was hard to have a conversation relative to any of the individual zoning cases without understanding the bigger picture. How do they all fit together? And so, the, the first page that's, that I shared with you, that, that top cover page was actually part of the presentation that was made to you all back in 2022. And you may recall, and I'll refresh your recollection if you don't, at that time, what we made you aware of is that the parties had come together, Duke Health, Halle, who is developing Veritas, and Belcanto had come together, looked at the policies, recognized that employment needed to be a big part of it, recognized that mixed use needed to be a part of it, the special planning area policies talk about higher densities, and so they essentially created these three sub-districts within the Green Level West Destination Center. And, and they, these sub-districts were designed, again, to achieve the individual objectives of the, of the parties involved, but also the collective objectives of the Green Level West Special Planning Area. And so, you had the, the medical sub-district, you had the mixed-use sub-district, and you had the residential sub-district. So, on the second page, that, I've just kind of taken that first page and shown you kind of how the Duke property sits on that, how the Veritas property sits on that, and then ultimately, the Belcanto site sits on that. And so, the parties worked in close coordination to talk about use, because as you're aware, the special planning area policies talk a lot about use. And again, it talks about having employment, a strong employment base, making sure that the employment and office, and I think one of the policies specifically recommends that that employment and office be located closer to the interchange. So, again, as you kind of see how the, the medical, the medical district was established, it's established essentially right on top of that interchange. It also talks about mixed use, and that's located to the south. And as you all are aware, the Veritas project, which was approved back in November, had some pretty remarkable changes that happened during that process in coordination with the staff. There was the development of a fairly sizable common area around what was called Street E at that time. Increases were made to the amount of non-residential associated with that, really with a commercial focus. 75% of the non-residential associated with that development has to be around kind of that neighborhood green in Veritas, with the idea of kind of creating what I would call the commercial hub of that mixed-use area. And so, Belcanto, as you can see on that second page, really occupied primarily the residential portion of what the parties had worked on. There's a portion of it that, that clips the mixed-use area, there's a portion of it that includes the possibility of future medical, because they've been talking to Duke about potentially ancillary things that could serve Duke's purposes while not being developed by Duke. In addition to the coordination that the parties had with respect to use, the third page that I gave you represents the circulation that the parties have worked on. And the parties recognize that, again, as part of a cohesive and collective Destination Center, although being developed by three separate parties, they recognize how important it was that those parties worked together, so that when streets connected, they connected in a way that made sense, so that when sidewalks connected, they connected in a way that made sense. You all, staff, was incredibly invaluable in that process. Rob essentially served as a liaison between all three parties. He'd make comments on one, on one case about this is what the street section needs to look like, and then he'd take that to the next party. And so, really, it was a collective effort with your staff, making sure that the circulation, whether it be street for, for the benefit of vehicles, but also pedestrian as well as multimodal. Bicycle tracks are part of the plan, separated bike lanes are, are continuous throughout the plan, and so, again, it was a, it was a coordinated effort amongst all of the parties to make sure that the use goals of the special planning area were realized as part of that process, but also to make sure that the cohesive connectivity opportunity would be realized in, in the special planning area. And again, I want to reinforce, this is zoning. You all are very familiar with the difference between zoning and land use plans and comprehensive plans, and what the Cary Community Plan says. The Cary Community Plan says, we want it, the zoning says, you gotta do it. And so, the good news is, Duke's gotta do a lot of things, because it's in the zoning for that property. And so, as of today, the Duke Health property has been zoned for 100-bed hospital, up to 750,000 square feet of office and medical, 55,000 square feet of commercial, 250 multifamily units, and a two, and 250 rooms of hotels, which is roughly two hotels. The Veritas site, which Halle got approved back in November, also includes zoning approvals. You gotta do it, and that is- And that is 1,300 multifamily units, 200, up to 225,000 square feet of office and institution uses, 20,000 square feet of commercial, and 125 hotel rooms. So again, another, the possibility of a third hotel being located in that mixed-use area. And again, these are part of the entitlements. They're going to provide predictability associated with what is going to be built there. In addition, in each of these cases, whether it's Duke Health, whether it's Veritas, or whether it's Belcanto, there are commitments to doing structured parking along the Green Level West corridor. So you see continuity with respect to building form. Again, something that was important, the Cary Community Plan talks about it, the special planning area policies talk about making sure there's cohesive building form. And so you're going to get that as you drive through and down Green Level West because you've got structured parking. You're not going to have some buildings being large and some buildings being small. There will be uniformity, which we believe is going to be an asset to the overall community. And so here we are, well, I guess the last thing I should say, progress is being made in the destination center as we speak with respect to development. As most of the council is aware, probably all of you are aware, there's already been 102,000-square-foot medical office building constructed by Duke as part of their Phase One. As Mr. Wilson mentioned, Duke has come forward with their Phase Two, which I, as I understand, is 111,000-square-foot ambulatory care facility. So the employment portion of the development is moving forward. And so what Belcanto is excited to be here to do is to bring forward that really strong residential component with a mix of non-residential uses included in it. And so let me see if I can move to... I'm going to talk a minute about the primary focus of what Belcanto's been doing on their own site. So as, as the staff report notes, there are a variety of conditions included in the case that speak to electric vehicle charging stations. They speak to the requirement for structured parking facilities. They talk about the connectivity. But in addition to that, one of the things that Belcanto takes very seriously, and they've been working on really since the genesis of this plan, is place-making and community gathering areas. And that has been very important to them. And so not just in size, and we've got three very large, well, we've got two very large community gathering areas and a third that's a little bit smaller. And I'm going to hand out, another handout. This is an excerpt from the preliminary development plan. This is part of the zoning that is going around. The staff report and the presentation included some excerpts, but I wanted to expand a little bit on the type of community gathering areas that are going to be part of this project because I think it's reflective of a developer who knows their business, knows the type of spaces that they want to create for the people that are going to be living within the community that will be there. And so as was mentioned during the presentation, there are, it's a total of 35,000 square feet that is the minimum community gathering area. That's seven times the Cary LDO requirement, which as we know is fairly laughable, but it is seven times larger than what the ordinance would otherwise require. There are three distinct places where we have already committed to having community gathering areas. The first is on Pod One. So this is in the mixed-use pod. Again, that's an area where you're going to have a structured parking facility wrapped with a mixed-use building, and that's going to be a minimum 3,000-square-foot community gathering area, but primarily hardscapes. You know, there's going to be outdoor seating, and so that's going to be kind of wired around, I don't want to say urban, but a more urban feel because the building form is going to be larger and it's going to be a mixed-use area. In Pod Three, it's going to be a little bit different. Pod Three is going to be a minimum 19,000-square-foot community gathering area. There are, there are topographic features and environmental features on Pod Three that separate Pod Three and Pod Four that the developer looks forward to taking advantage of, providing walking trails, exercise stations. So a little bit more suburban in nature, kind of more similar to what you would see in what I would consider a typical Cary community gathering area. And then lastly, the third community gathering area is in Pod Six, up adjacent to Bachelor Creek. And that pod is a minimum of 13,000 square feet and is much more suburban in nature. And so in those areas, I could envision, and those pictures show it, you could envision gazebos, play areas potentially for children. And, and this is a, you know, this is going to be a surface-parked area. And so again, I think what the community gathering area, the sense of place that Belcanto is trying to achieve here is reflective of the type of people that would be living over there and the type of residential experiences that they're going to have. Because in this one development, while it's all multifamily, the three, there's essentially going to be three different styles of multifamily living. There's going to be much more vertical along Pod One and Two. Pod Three is going to be surface park, so a little bit less intense. And then Pod Five is going to back up to the creek and will be much more traditionally suburban multifamily in that location. So I did want to cover a little bit in terms of the place-making that they're looking to achieve here and how important that is to them. So I just, we're excited to be here. We believe this is the type of development that fits here. We believe it's, as I said, cohesive with what's going on in the area. It's complementary to the zoning that is in place for Duke Health. It's complementary to the zoning that's in place for Veritas. And we don't know when those things are going to happen, but we know they're going to have to happen. And if they want to change it, they're going to have to come back to the seven of you all and ask to do something different. So we're excited to be the third part of this act, and we welcome your feedback and look forward to working with you through the remainder of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. So now is the time for the public hearing for 22REZO4 Belcanto at Green Level Destination Center PDP. And I will call on our town clerk for any written comments or any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
If you are here in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, now is your opportunity. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to my colleagues for their comments and questions.
I have comments. I'll go ahead and start. So I have a question for our staff, for Rob. Will the private roads be built to our town standards, or are they different standards?
It's a technical point, but they're accessways, so they're really not roads. Accessways are a separate item in our standard specs.
Okay.
They resemble more driveways than parking lots.
Okay.
So no, they won't be built to road standards.
Big driveways. Okay. All right. I'm a little concerned about the, well, let me preface this by saying, I think that this is the right place for density. We were talking about this in the last one. There's right places and wrong places for density. I think this is the right place for density. So I'm very happy with that. I think that apartments are the right fit, especially adjacent to the hospital. I do think that it would be nice, and I'm not saying it's a must-have, but it would be nice if there was a little bit more commercial space, because there's 20,000 to the south. There's, I think, 10,000 in this one. That's still not a whole lot for this many units when we're talking about, how many, is it, 700 to 20, 2,200 basically units? That's just not a lot of commercial to serve that large of a community. So I think that's something that ought to be considered. But one of the biggest concerns I have about this is that I'm totally fine with the idea that it goes up to eight stories and I'm okay with the up to 700 units, but I am concerned about the 50% requirement for the parking, because that means that you have potentially at least 350, I don't remember how many parking spots per unit you have, but let's just say you had one parking spot per unit. That would mean there'd be 350 surface parking lots, spots minimally. And that, I believe, is about 2.57 acres in surface parking. And that's a little bit, like, doesn't jive with this idea that we're kind of, we're dense or we're removing, reducing the buffers because we want to put these, you know, nice buildings in, and we want this like sense of place or whatever you call that, the place-making, you know, to have a bunch of surface parking. So I would love it if the applicant could go back and see if it's, there's potential to increase that requirement or that minimum amount of parking and parking decks. And Rob, so the buffer of 30 feet on Green Level West is consistent with the project to the south. They both would have 30.
That's correct.
Okay. What's the topography difference? Like they were showing the retaining walls. What's the topography difference?
The, there was a pond at one time on the Belcanto site that's been drained, is no longer there. But topographically, it's a fairly calm topography in this area. We see other places where we quickly have 10 to 30 feet of change. And what topography there is here, it's spread out over a larger area.
Okay.
So I don't think they're expecting significant, if they have retaining walls in their streetscape, I don't think they're expecting they would be significant, and that's why they've offered the six-foot limit along the streetscape.
I think given the fact that the buffer is going down from 50 to 30, I think it'd be good for us to just pay some attention to like those, what that, that buffer's going to have in it. You know, maybe it has retaining walls in places, maybe it doesn't. But, you know, what is that planting going to be like? And how are we ensuring that Green Level West is going to look like a great-looking road when this whole thing is done? Just like the last project, I see that, you know, there's three, the donated open space or gathering spaces divided between three spots. Might be nice just to put a minimum in there of like minimum number of square footage for each. Is it in there? Okay. All right. Cool. The, the thing about the 24 EVs, you know, there was a time when we felt like we were like, hey, come on, give us some EVs. We really want them, you know? But now I think the way that the future anticipation is going with electric vehicles, that, you know, it's almost like projects need it. Like, it's not, not like you're trying to appease a concern that we have from the council. It's just like, you guys are going to need this, right? So I think you did a minimum of 24 EVs. I almost wonder if you want to contemplate conduit, like some kind of requirement for running conduits so that in the future, when you need a lot more than 24, you already have the infrastructure in place for that. The 10-foot retaining walls on the, on the pond, I think everybody thought that when I first started pushing for having no more than six feet for retaining, for retaining walls, and then it has to be tiered. I was doing it for aesthetics. I wasn't. I was doing it because I remember being a kid and my brother and me climbing everything, jumping off of everything. And I, you know, we have a couple neighborhoods that have really tall retaining walls, which I think are unsafe. So that's why I kind of pushed for that six-feet max, is that if a kid falls off of six feet, yeah, he goes over to Duke next door and gets his arm, you know, cast, but it could be more serious the taller it gets. So that's why I have that kind of sensitivity to it. So I'd love for that to be maybe examined. And then last but not least, I don't know if 35% standard for this is adequate. I mean, this is, the densities here are a very urban-like density. It would be disappointing if this was built to look a lot like, what do you call that? Like the garden-style apartments, right? Because we just, we're putting a lot of density here. I would love to see this look more urban, very similar to the Fenton. And I have no idea what the standards are at Fenton, like what their minimum masonry requirement was and what they actually accomplished. So again, I don't know, but this is just an observation of my part, is that I want to make sure that whatever gets built, if it's going to have urban densities, it should look urban, it should look sophisticated, a real jewel, because people will be seeing Cary for the first time if they're getting off 540, and this is a gateway community for us.
Very good. How about on this end?
I have some things. First, I have to say that I'm very impressed by this presentation. There are a lot of good things that I've noted. I feel like bike lanes, separate bike lanes are very beautiful, and I hope we can actually, when in the final designing, I think that stays. I do like that they have common areas, walkways, greenway accessibility, and they're paying extra attention to the infrastructure, making sure that all three builders are actually working together to keep the aesthetics similar. So that would be a good thing. It'll give us a community feel. I do agree with Jennifer that if it is, if it's an urban setting, and we are saying it's an urban setting, and then one thing that Jennifer mentioned when she started her comment, that where we put density in District D is important, and this is the right place to put that density. I feel that, that apartments, Fenton style, that would be fabulous since it's going to be the first thing that people see, like Jennifer said, you know, as they get down from 540. Things that I would like to, I would recommend that we could consider perhaps playground for kids. West Cary is a place where we see a lot of young families, and having that common area and space, I think, is very, very important. Or a pool, or I could be a little selfish and say clubhouse, but I'm overstretching probably, but you know, you get the point. I noticed one thing on slide number 43 on my screen, or I could say, sorry, 44. Access and circulation, Street D. Is there any buffer by that side or that's kept open? I know for Veritas, that was kept open for a reason, for future expansion. Is that the same case here? Or we are going to have buffer? Because we, I don't see anything here on this side.
I believe that as it's laid out on the PDP, there isn't a buffer on the west side of Street D. There is a streetscape buffer on the east side, but it runs along the property line so that there's no spite strip, so that there will be access if and when the property to the west develops. The property to the west is also in the destination center.
35,000 square feet is what, what's mentioned for the common area. Will that be divided in three spaces? Or that's like, I know that there are going to be three areas for...
They've committed to a minimum of three areas. The Pod One, and let me go to a slide.
It is 35,000, 3,500 or 1,000, sorry?
So the community gathering space in Pod One, that you see here in the purple, is going to be a minimum of 3,000 square feet. The community gathering space that you see in Pod Three is a minimum of 19,000 square feet.
Okay.
And then the community gathering space that you see up in Pod Six is a minimum of 13,000 square feet.
Okay. So that's total.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's good. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Ms. Craig, do you have anything?
Like Ms. Bonzal, I was happy to see consideration for separated bike lanes and the EV charging stations. I made a note that recycling stations would be in Pods One and Two, and I'm wondering why Pods One and Two and not the others. I'm trying to, I'm looking at the map to see if maybe there's close proximity to some of the, to the other pods. But that's, that's a question I have. Also, one of the things that I didn't hear was any mention of workforce housing. That's definitely something that I know, we have a growing commitment for workforce housing, and our last rezoning was at 10%. So this is an area that will be heavily urban and many people supporting the hospital. So there would be many income ranges there, and that's something that I'd like to see a commitment to. And, and at all income levels, not at just the 80% AMI.
Other comments? How about on this end?
Do you want to go first?
Oh, after you.
Oh, geez. I guess I have a question for staff. There was a discussion at one point about renaming Green Level. Yeah. Where, where are we on that?
That's something that the staff is working on in 2024. So we begun background work on that. I'm probably not the best expert. When we, when this comes back, we can give you an update on the status of that project.
That'd be great. That'd be great. So I have a couple of, you know, I'm not going to regenerate anything anyone else has said. I like the providing the accommodations for transit. There is a micro-transit study coming for West Cary, and so it will be great to see what the need is, right? Don't send a bus there until the people are there, but you need a bus to support the people. So that'll be important. I am concerned that there's not a lot of commercial. I think it was Ryan Eads, who is sitting here, and I- I hadn't, to be fair, I hadn't thought about it until he said, you know, that's not as much commercial as was originally written in the Destination Center document that we had approved a while ago. And so that is concerning. I don't know what type of commercial will be there. I would think that with the 1,300 apartments in Veritas, another 700 apartments, so now you're talking, and not even including what's in the two Duke ones, you're talking about 2,500 units, not people, but units. It could support significantly more commercial, a small grocery store, whatever. An advertised grocery store is 40,000 square feet, and you're only offering a 20,000 square feet minimum. So I'm concerned about what that might look like. I, I would like to see more commercial there. I'm also concerned, and I'd love more detail about where the number of units are and which pod, and maybe I missed that. But if you're going to put out of the 700 units and put, you know, 350 or 400 in Pod 1, and as Councilmember Robinson said, and you're only offering 50% structured parking in Pod 1, that's not going to work. So I'm actually interested in having more structured parking and understanding where the units will fit. Maybe you have that, maybe you don't, but if you have the pod layout already, I think it would be great to have an idea of where those units will reside. There was a comment also about it could go three stories to eight stories on the, so I'm wondering, in Pod 1, maybe I misunderstood that. I'm a little concerned about eight stories being right up to the street on Green Level, what that might look like. I might have gotten that wrong? Is that, did I get that right?
I have the same confusion of the stories.
What is the, yeah, what is the height for Pod 1?
Pod 1 is minimum of four stories and a maximum of eight stories.
Oh, so it is. I did get it right. That, yeah, I, I like the articulated back. I think we've all seen that, where it, you know, starts a little bit shorter. The eight stories right at the frontage with 30-foot streetscape. I know it's supposed to be urban, and I, I agree with all of that, and I want urban, but eight stories right on Green Level, right at Green Level could, could make me think, oh, I'm not sure I want to drive into that. It's not going to surprise anybody, but, and maybe you all don't know, but at this table, we have three EV owners, three folks just sitting at this table. The rate of EVs, sales in North Carolina are now at 10%. Average across, across the country is at 6%. So that would be 42 unit, or 42 EV ports for the 700 units. So just doing a little math for you, Jason. You knew I would. And then, of course, I, I'm really excited that Representative Craig, Councilmember Craig brought up affordable housing. I definitely am on that same track. Thank you for bringing that up. I would love, I would love it if this development would have 15% affordable housing. I think it's very important for us to start considering things besides 80% AMI, 80% AMI. The average one-bedroom in Cary now is something like $2,100. I don't know of a maintenance worker or a nurse that can afford that, especially someone who lives here. I would like to see it have a variety of income levels in that, in whatever that condition might be that comes back for us. And that's it. I think all the others were said.
Okay. Yeah, and I think a lot of what I, you know, was thinking was covered. There's a couple of things I did want to mention, though. I was very pleased. I know multifamily, you typically don't see recycling as even an option. I was really pleased to see that included. And I just want to, you know, throw this out there, as the town expands into our composting, ten-wide into these pilots, wow, wouldn't it be terrific to see the, you know, composting available right there, since you're already building the recycling center, right? Adding a, a spot to drop off your recycling, which I'm sure someday in the future, the town might just come pick up, you never know. So something like that included, I think, would be a really terrific addition from an environmental perspective. But I was really pleased to see the recycling in there, because it, it breaks my heart sometimes. If you go to some places where there are, you know, some denser housing, and you see the, you know, the amount of trash, right? And there's just not an opportunity to reduce the amount of stuff that's going to the landfill. And as a municipality, we absolutely have to reduce what we're sending to the landfills, you know, beg, borrow, and steal, and, you know, and just try to do anything we can. So that would be pretty remarkable if we could see something like that. I do agree with the affordable housing. You know, I'm starting to, as I learn more about housing cost, I'm starting to get, I think, a more relaxed perspective on the definition of affordable housing. It's not always, you have to have a special program where it's reduced, reduction in rent for individuals at certain income levels. There also can be commitments to smaller units, things that are naturally always going to be a little bit more affordable. And I'm, I'm hearing a lot from affordable housing advocates that they really like to see studio-style dwellings in places where, you know, perhaps somebody with limited mobility, or seniors, or individuals can, can live a little bit more affordably. So I'm really open kind of to what that looks like. But I, I would be really pleased, especially in this, you know, dense residential area, serving the, the hospital. I've said this before. I said this when we were speaking to the folks representing Duke. There's a whole lot of allied staff that work in any medical setting that, that don't make a doctor's salary, right? So that's just something to really consider when we're trying to focus on expanding workforce housing. This is by nature workforce housing. And it's going to be workforce housing for, you know, a really wide range of incomes. And that's really, you know, what I'm looking for here is, is a consideration for that. It doesn't, you know, have to be hard and fast, you know, reductions in rent, but, you know, something like what I was describing before, I think, would be really workable in this area. And I said it to the other folks, so I figured it's only fair to keep repeating myself. I'm really good at repeating myself. And I'd like to see, I, I do agree with needing a little bit more structured parking there, probably, right? I do not, I, I don't see more structured parking, less surface parking. I see just more structured parking. It seems like I might be a little light on parking to begin with, because I'm going to say, the walkability and bikeability of this proposal is fantastic, and it's exactly what I'd like to see in this type of proposal. And in addition to that, you really need someplace to walk and bike to. So, so if there's a little bit more commercial, I do believe that if I were living here, and I can see myself, I absolutely can see myself living there when I was 30, right? I got a job, I got a, I'm going to want to walk to a restaurant. I'm going to want to go to lunch. I'm going to want to stop at a, you know, small grocer of some sort. I'm going to want to walk to those places. And I really think this, this Destination Center is going to be almost like a little ecosystem all to itself, and really kind of self-sustaining. So, you know, perfectly happy with the density, with, I guess I'm even arguing for a little more density, which is weird, but a, an addition of a little bit more commercial space does make sense to me. I think I had just one more, but I can't read my handwriting. Oh, and I want to say, you know, I want to express my, you know, with this, this, with the, the internal streetscapes being reduced from 30 feet to 15 feet, I'm okay with that. This is an, an urban feel area for the most part, and that's perfectly okay. What I'd like to see perhaps is, let's talk about working with the town to have those trees that are going to be planted in those areas. Let's have them have a really robust infrastructure underneath them like silversales, to make sure that those trees get nice and big and give shade. We've had other developers partner with us to, to put some of that infrastructure in where we got, you know, the more urban hardscaped areas. And I think that's something that if we work together on, we can get you nice, big trees, lots of shade, and then I think everybody's happier, those, you know, coming in for whatever reason, and those living there. So those are my comments in addition to the rest of the staff, but I'm very pleased otherwise.
Other comments?
I just want to share one thing that I saw on the news this week. 41% of Cary citizens work from home.
Yeah, I read that as well.
41%. So we need to also, and it's not changing, right? Obviously, it was higher during the pandemic, but it's not changing, and it seems to be a pretty constant. So we need to think about, as, as these areas are being developed, that there are places for people to go where they live, work, play, learn, grow. And I think some of these areas within this urban, I, I really am thankful to the applicant for bringing so many of these ideas, because I think that's exactly what people want to do. They're, they're working, or they come home, and they want an area where they can recreate, where they can enjoy nature, right? Access to the greenway. But we have to think a little differently in the past. We used to have RTP. Everybody would go to RTP, or SAS, or whatever, and that's just not happening anymore. So we need to make sure that the places where folks live are also places that they can recreate, they can, you know, grow their families, and they can also work comfortably.
Yeah, these were very helpful. You should do this more. Very helpful.
Excellent comments. Anything else? All right. This is going to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we will see it in a few months. All right, we go to our third public hearing, consideration of right-of-way closing Twyla Road, Assistant Development Director Rob Wilson will once again present this item, and we may take action on this. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening again. The development of the Twyla Road South PDD, the developer of the Twyla Road South PDD has requested that the council close a portion of the Twyla Road right-of-way. Twyla Road is in Western Cary and is accessed from Green Hope School Road. Twyla was terminated into a cul-de-sac about 15 years ago during the construction of NC 540, and has provided access to the remaining adjacent homes since. On May 7th of 2020, council approved a rezoning for the Twyla South PDD, which included access from Twyla Road. As part of developing the Twyla Road South neighborhood, the developer acquired all of the properties that were depending on the cul-de-sac portion of Twyla Road for access. Accordingly, this portion of the road and its associated right-of-way, as depicted here in red, are no longer needed in their current configuration. As such, NCDOT has abandoned its maintenance responsibility for this public right-of-way. Cary can also close the public right-of-way, at which point the land would go to the adjacent property owner. As part of the development plan review process for Phase 3 of the Twyla Road South Development, staff and the developer have worked together to design a new roundabout that will provide access from Twyla Road to Kimthorn Road and the public alleys serving the neighborhood. Given that the existing Twyla Road right-of-way shown here in red is no longer needed, and the developer will be dedicating right-of-way for the new public street alignments shown here in blue as part of their development, the developer has requested that Cary close this right-of-way. Staff believes that eliminating the underlying right-of-way that's no longer needed will benefit the public interest by eliminating portions of the right-of-way that are no longer in use, allowing the new subdivision to better integrate into the existing street network with a roundabout, and allowing a more favorable layout to be achieved that will not deprive anyone of reasonable access. At this point, Cary can either do nothing and leave the right-of-way unmaintained, or add the right-of-way to our street network and take over maintenance, or, as staff is recommending, close the right-of-way. State law provides clear statutory guidance for such situations. Staff has followed this process by calling this public hearing, providing notice of this hearing on Cary's website and in the newspaper, mailing notice to adjacent owners, and placing signs along the road right-of-way. Pending public comment, staff recommends that after the public hearing, the council authorize the mayor to execute the street closing order and approve staff to record the order at the Wake County Register of Deeds. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be available for questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Now it's time for the public hearing for the consideration of right-of-way closing of Twyla Road, and I'll call on the clerk for written comments or any call-in speakers.
No written comments, nor registered speakers.
Okay. I now invite anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this public hearing. Now's your time to come forward. Anyone to speak at the Twyla Road closing?
Mr. Mayor, I'm the advocate. If any questions arise, but I don't need to speak unless there's some sort of question or matter necessary.
Okay. Saying no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments, or if we have none.
I have a question. Can you bring up the picture again with the roundabout? Are you saying that those roads won't be created?
The blue?
Well, there's a blue with an overlay of red.
So the red is the existing right-of-way that NCDOT has abandoned, and that staff's recommending that the town close. The blue would be the new streets that this development will construct and dedicate, and that will be public and would be maintained by the town.
Okay, so it's more about the right-of-way, not the actual road that's going to be built?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
This allows the right-of-way to-
It will end up looking like this, but how we get there is what we're talking about now, which is get rid of the right-of-way. Okay.
So to be clear, the blue will be roads that they build. Everything outside of the blue that's in the red color will be owned by the adjacent landowners. So Cary will not own the red that's outside of the blue, if that makes sense.
But they will be public roads.
The blue part, the blue part will be public right-of-way.
Everything blue will be public right-of-way. Okay.
It's just a whole bunch more right-of-way than we need. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the wrong place.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Are there questions or comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
Go, no, we're fine. Well, make a motion that we authorize the mayor to execute the street closing order and approve staff to record the order at the Wake County Register of Deeds.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's see. Yep, Mr. Wilson's up for the next one, too. All right.
Another one?
Last public hearing is consideration of right-of-way closing for Macedonia Road. Once again, Mr. Wilson will present this item, and we may take action. Mr. Wilson?
Apologize in advance. This presentation may slightly resemble the last one. The developer of a site at the intersection of Macedonia Road and Walnut Street has requested that the council close an abandoned portion of the Macedonia Road right-of-way. Macedonia Road is located in Eastern Cary and is identified on this map by the red circle. It connects Walnut Street to Jones Franklin Road and Tryon Road. Macedonia Road used to intersect Walnut Street at an angle. In the early 2000s, NCDOT realigned Macedonia Road southward to create a more traditional and safer perpendicular intersection with Walnut Street that also created the opportunity for a signalized four-way intersection with Crossroad Manor Court to the west. Accordingly, the previous path of the road and its associated right-of-way depicted here in red was no longer needed for through traffic. It was retained as public right-of-way, however, as it was the only means of access for a couple of detached homes on adjacent properties. This section of right-of-way, which used to connect Walnut to Walnut, is the portion we're discussing tonight. In March of 2022, a developer purchased all of these adjacent properties that were depending on this section of right-of-way for access. These properties, which have been zoned for multifamily since the 1970s, are located in the Crossroads Mixed Use Overlay District. In April of 2022, the developer subsequently submitted a development plan for multifamily development. Since the adjacent properties no longer need access to this remaining public right-of-way, NCDOT is abandoning maintenance of this right-of-way. Cary can also close the public right-of-way, at which point the land would go to the adjacent property owner. As part of the development plan review process, the developer has identified that closing the right-of-way and incorporating it into the site will provide safer ingress and egress for residents, allow for the development of an attractive and uniform streetscape with a street-side trail along the site's frontages, and optimize the site's internal street layout. Staff believes that eliminating the underlying right-of-way that's no longer needed will benefit the public interest by eliminating portions of the right-of-way that are no longer in use, allowing the adjacent development to achieve a more uniform and attractive streetscape, and allowing a more favorable internal street layout to be achieved that will not deprive anyone of reasonable access. At this point, Cary can either do nothing and leave the right-of-way unmaintained, or add the right-of-way to our street network and take over maintenance, or, as staff is recommending, close the right-of-way. recommending, close the right-of-way. State law provides clear statutory guidance for such situations. Staff has followed this process by calling this public hearing, providing notice of this hearing on Cary's website and in the newspaper, mailing notice to adjacent owners, and placing signs along the road right-of-way. Pending public comment, staff recommends that after the public hearing, the council authorize the mayor to execute the street closing order and approve staff to record the order at the Wake County Register of Deeds. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be available for questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Now it's time for the public hearing for the consideration of right-of-way closing of Macedonia Road, and at this time, I'll call on the clerk for any written comments or registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Very good. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this public hearing, now's your opportunity. Saying no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Can I ask a quick question? I know, this, all of this right-of-way that we're giving up, it's not actually land the town owns. It's just the right to build something, or the right to maintain a road. It's just, it's not actually land that we own, per se, or is it?
Not in the traditional sense. I mean, that's correct. So it's right-of-way that's been dedicated to the public, and for road purposes, DOT or Cary could put that road to use for the public. So we are like trustees of the land for the public, and that gives us the authority, then, if it's not needed, for DOT to abandon the right-of-way and for Cary to actually close it if it's not needed for public use anymore. So we are not the owner in a traditional sense of owning the property. Yes.
Okay, and we wouldn't, nobody would figure out, okay, that's 0.1 acres now that this developer has the right to build upon. There's extra value that this developer now has.
That's true.
Because, right? So there is an added value to that developer. Okay. The goodness of our hearts.
Well, and for this one, they will be building streetscape, streetscape in this area, street-side trail in this area, so there are.
So there'll be, it'll be a benefit to the public.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Other questions or comments or a motion?
Oh, I didn't have it up.
I'm trying to find it.
Right. Let's see. Make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute another street closing order and approve staff to record the order at the Wake County Register of Deeds.
Aye, second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Hope you're not too tired from standing, Mr. Wilson. We have no discussion items. Our item 22 RZ18, Trinity Road Townhouses, was removed from the agenda at the adoption of the agenda at the request of the applicant. So that concludes our meeting, and I declare this meeting adjourned.